Thank you all. They have it so dark out here. I can't see your faces, but I see you standing. Welcome, everyone. As your Hamilton County President, I am proud to report that Hamilton County is strong and our budget is structurally balanced. This year's all-funds budget of $1.32 billion invests in citizens, affordable housing, small businesses, seniors, economic development, tourism, infrastructure, the environment, our youth, and the future. Whether you're urban or suburban, whether you're a big city, small city, village, or township, we are one Hamilton County. So today, my theme will be "One Hamilton County, and we got it done." Let's give another hand for the Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church on their wonderful Black History Month dedication in memory of Cincinnati's own, the late Louise Sharpshires. You can learn more about Louise Sharpshires' story at our Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame down on the Ohio Riverbank. It's open every day from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and it's free for the entire family. We call it "edutainment." I want to thank Pastor Casey Smith of Corinthian Baptist Church for giving the prayer today. We start everything with prayer. The Hamilton County Sheriff's Color Guard, give them a round of applause. Yes. The newly-appointed Veteran Services Commission member and Air Force veteran, Stephen Stanford, thank you so much. And the 40-year radio broadcast veteran, The Voice, P. Ann Everson Price, for being a part of our program this evening. I also would like to give a special thank you, because this is not easy to put together, to my Chief of Staff, Veda Stephens, my aide, Deontay Morris, our county communications director, Bridget Daughtry, as well as Amanda Carter, who's in our communications department. I'd also like to thank Joshua Steele and his entire staff here at the Hamilton County Memorial Hall. Isn't it beautiful? And Chef Marvin Smith of Ali's Trolley for the great food at the reception. I hope you all left a little for me. I don't get to eat to the end, so I hope you all left a little something for me. I also want to thank the Sheriff's Department, the President and CEO of Metro, Darryl Haley and his staff for teaming up with SOAC and Ms. Viola Brown to provide free transportation so that our senior citizens can be here and join us tonight. Thank you to ICRC and City Cable and all of the volunteers that have assisted today to make tonight a huge success. Give all the volunteers a round of applause. Now, today, I hear we have a packed house in here, so I want to give, I want you to give yourselves a round of applause for being here with us and caring so deeply about Hamilton County. I want to thank my family and my father, Dr. Stephen Reese, Sr., who is here with me tonight. Thank you for being here, along with my Reese team and my church family, New Friendship Baptist Church. Please give a round of applause. Also, among us are so many elected officials from across our Hamilton County. But first, I want to give special recognition to my colleagues, Vice President Denise Dreehouse and Commissioner Stephanie Summerall-Dumas. I would like to have all the mayors from throughout Hamilton County to please stand and be recognized. I know it's dark in here. I know I saw, there's my mayor. Yes. I'd like all of our judges to please stand. Thank you. Now, I'd like to have all state representatives, state senators, city council members, township trustees, school board members, and superintendents, please stand and be recognized. And I would like to recognize our county administrator, Mr. Jeff Aludo. Please stand and be recognized. Now, I called for Jeff Aludo to stand, but I gotta tell you, we've got the best county employees in America. County employees, if you're here, please stand and be recognized. Thank you for all your hard work. And I believe the city manager is here from the city of Cincinnati, Cheryl Long. Please stand and be recognized. As you can see, we have a big county, and partnerships are critical to moving our county forward to have one Hamilton County. As we move to the next part, I'd like to say that yesterday, first of all, let me say Happy Black History Month. We've got a lot of history makers from Hamilton County. In that spirit, yesterday, I joined Phil Castellini, general manager of the Cincinnati Reds, along with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s son, Martin Luther King III, and his wife, Andrea Waters King, as they announced a Major League Baseball partnership called Realizing the Dream. And this initiative is huge, and the Cincinnati Reds is the first Major League Baseball team to sign on. It's the countdown to 100, the 100th birthday of Dr. King, and it'll be a massive, massive, globally, day of service. But in talking with Martin King III, again, we met at the 50th anniversary of the March in Washington, where I was blessed to give a speech where Dr. King had stood and given his famous "I Have a Dream" speech. And at the 50th anniversary, I said, "No more temporary solutions to permanent problems. It's time to make the dream real." So as I stand here, it reminds me that I am a beneficiary of Dr. King and so many others that came before me. So many who have been denied for 200 years and could not stand where I stand, but they did not give up hope, they did not give up fight, and they did not give up trying to open that door so that I could stand here today, an African-American woman, giving the state of Hamilton County. And let me say, I don't take it lightly. And because of growing up in civil rights and being a beneficiary of Dr. King's movement and Rosa Parks and so many others, this is why my leadership style has been and will continue to be for the last 20 years until the day I leave this earth. My leadership style is one that comes from civil rights, one that pushes for change, action, results, and equity. That's my leadership style. Tonight, thank you. Tonight, I'm dedicating this historic moment to my grandmother, the late Ora Lee Howard, and my mother, the late Barbara Howard Reese. Ora Lee Howard lived at 1082 Lynn Street in the West End, just a few blocks from where we are today. That's where she raised my mother, but could only get a job cleaning wealthy people's homes. In those days, it was called "day's work." When she used to babysit me, we would walk uptown where we passed City Hall. I didn't know what it was. I said, "Man, that's a castle. It's so beautiful." When we used to have to clean up Grandma's house and put everything, get the trash together so we could get the trash out of the house, we didn't put it on the curb like we do today and have the workers come and pick it up. We used to have to go to what was called an incinerator where the fire would come up. And I didn't understand. I thought that was normal. And Grandma would always say, "When you go there, be careful and don't let the fire hit you." Because it was in the projects and residents were poor, no one really cared about their environmental risk because of where they lived and because of the income and the color of the skin. My grandmother, Ora Lee Howard, would later die on Christmas Day from an asthma attack. Today, I stand before you, Ora Lee Howard's granddaughter and president of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners, to announce that our county, for the first time ever, we have funded and will have an environmental sustainability manager in Hamilton County. No matter your income, your neighborhood, every child should be able to breathe and live with clean air, clean water, and a safe environment. And our board has taken a bold step to make sure that happens. My late mother, Barbara Howard Reese, once applied to work for Hamilton County. I was just a little girl. I didn't understand it. She was so excited when she got the job and got accepted, only to be denied and the job rescinded because the color of her skin and her party affiliation. I stand here today as the president, her daughter, and the president of the Hamilton County Commission proudly announcing that those days are over in Hamilton County. And in recognition of Black History Month, I want to point out some of the progress and historic steps our county has taken to have a diverse workforce and steps we have taken to diversify our boards with historical appointments, like the first African-American to be appointed as the Director of Jobs and Family Services, Director Michael Patton. We now have the county's first African-American Deputy Director, Ansten Turley. The first African-American and Latina woman, Angelita Moreno-Jones, was appointed to the Port Authority. The first African-Americans to be appointed to the Public Defenders Board are Ohio Civil Rights Hall of Famer Iris Rowling and the Director of the Holloman Justice and Policy Center, Attorney Gabriel Fletcher, who now serves as the Chair. And we have, for the first time in over 200 years, implemented the county's first-ever MBE, WBE, and Small Business Program under the direction of our Economic Inclusion Director, Mr. Robert Bell. When I was first elected, we had spent only $1,400 out of $16 million in the fourth quarter. And now, I stand here today to tell you, we have a minority spend goal of $70 million over the next five years. We collect the taxes from diverse citizens, and we cannot continue to have taxation without participation. That is why, as president, I will continue to push for partnerships like the historic one that was announced just this year between the Port Authority and the Cincinnati Realtors, African-American Realtors Organization. My office sponsored a Realtors Day at the county for the first time in history to promote homeownership and homeownership education. President and CEO of the Port Authority, Laura Bruner, was invited as a speaker. As a result, the group's president at that time, Derek Dansby, and Laura Bruner forged a historic agreement where the Realtors will now sell 20% of the Cares Home Portfolio residential properties in the county's land bank. This is a national model. We got it done right here at Hamilton County. Laura Bruner of the Port Authority and Derek Dansby and the Realtors, please stand and be recognized. Black History Month, we're taking action. Last year, I spoke about the $158 million in American Rescue funding we received from the Biden administration to give direct assistance to the citizens here in Hamilton County. Now, many other counties struggled to get their funding out to assist their citizens hit hard by the COVID global pandemic. As president, I am proud to announce that our board listened to the citizens and, as a result, made smart decisions and smart investments for both the needs of our residents, like $100 million to help with rental and utility assistance for residents in Hamilton County. $20 million went to strategies to end homelessness. $3.9 million went to youth resiliency grants to help our youth. And $1.5 million went to funding Cincinnati State to train and develop nurses to fill the gap to keep health care alive. I would like to thank and also recognize Dr. Monica Posey and our nursing program, and the nursing program Janice Lockett Hamilton for being with us, because once again, health care needs nurses. Hamilton County, through partnership, we got it done. Our board has also invested in communities who have been feeling as though they've been left behind. We had community impact grants and $3 million in community revitalization grants to assist municipalities such as the villages, the Village of Lincoln Heights, Colrain Township, Sharonville, Woodline, Lachlan, and many others. It's the first time we made that type of investment, because infrastructure throughout Hamilton County must be strong for our county to be strong. No more leaving behind municipalities. It's a new day at Hamilton County, one Hamilton County. In 2001, I hosted what was called a Relief-a-thon. Came up with this name. It's the opposite of a telethon. Telethon, we're trying to get your money. Relief-a-thon, we're trying to get the money to the people. And we hosted this in partnership with Waycross Media so that we could connect you. We had all this money, but how do we connect you with these opportunities? And so, it was very successful, and we had over 800 citizens that we were able to assist. But what we found was that we needed to do more. We needed to get out of the cubicles, out of the silos, and take the resources to the people instead of the people trying to find the resources. That's when we came up with the concept called 513 Relief Bus. We first launched it as a pilot. We utilized a borrowed mammography bus from UC Health. We wrapped it. I was running with flyers that we were just making copies. And we had nurses from UC Health giving the COVID vaccine. We had Jobs and Family Services to get the economic, and we had social services to connect it. The response was overwhelmingly positive. People had said, "Man, I didn't know Hamilton County has all this to offer." People were saying, "I hadn't seen Hamilton County. We're out in Harrison, and we were everywhere, in the suburbs, in the inner city." We were everywhere. And then, we took American Rescue Funds and we developed our own bus. And last year, at the State of the County, I talked about the launching of our own bus. I'm here to report as president of the Board of Commissioners. We're doing business different in Hamilton County. We're on wheels. We're bringing the services to you. And remember, everything we do must be measured. I want to give you the ROI report. We've been to 192 locations countywide. We've assisted 16,000 people here in Hamilton County. We provided free medical testing. We provided social services. We've got stories where people have come to us and said, "I didn't know where I was gonna go, but because of you, I was able to stay in my home." Because of the 513 Relief Bus of the county, I was able to find out about the kinship program. And I'm Grandma taking care of the grandkids. I didn't even know you had it. People came and thanked us. A woman had cancer, was diagnosed, and said, "I've never had to ask the county for anything. I pride myself. I pay my taxes, but I got this breast cancer diagnosis, and I want to make sure my kids can still stay in this home while I go through the test." She came back to the bus to say, "I came back to say thank you." I said, "Well, I'm gonna pray for you so that they get the cancer." She said, "Oh, no, no, no. They got it." One Hamilton County. We're getting it done. And so, I want you guys to take a look at the 513 Relief Program. This became a new way of how we do business in Hamilton County, where we can take the services and put them on wheels and bring them out to Lincoln Heights and bring them out to other areas throughout our county.
People need other resources and access, so JFS is working in that space. Free Store Food Bank is a partner. So people have a variety of needs, and so we need a variety of partners.
It's so important to bring the resources to the people and not to have them try to find us.
We absolutely love being on the bus as partners because we're able to be meeting people in their neighborhood.
We want to help people get back on their feet, move towards self-reliance and stability.
And I had a young lady who had lost her son to gun violence. I ran across the 513 bus. The young lady went in there, and they helped out. They gave her hope again.
They help a lot of us who truly need help.
I think the 513 Bus is very impactful. I think that there's a lot of agencies that talk the talk, but 513 Bus actually came out, bootstrap in our community, ready to help the community.
The experience was amazing, you know? Like I said, everybody was very hands-on. I feel like I got everything I needed. Thank God, you know? 513 Bus is amazing.
I would like to acknowledge Travina Adams, Scott Wilson, and all the partners of the 513 Relief Bus. Give them a big round of applause. And a big shout-out to JFS. Get a big shout-out, because a lot of money came through JFS. I want to invite everyone to come out tomorrow after we get done with the State of the County address. We get right to work. We roll up our sleeves and get ready to work. So tomorrow, I want to invite everyone out to our kickoff for the 2024 season of the 513 Relief Bus tomorrow at Corinthian Baptist Church at 10 a.m. Our theme is "Everything, Hamilton County." What we're gonna do, Jeff Aludo said, "What we're gonna do is we're gonna take all of Hamilton County, everything that you need, and we're bringing it all together at one stop. We're gonna have glucose checks. We're gonna have, we're gonna have blood pressure checks. We're gonna really increase screenings this year, free screenings, because we want to prevent. We're gonna have cancer checks. We're going to have all of that, birth certificates, food and economic assistance. The Otter's Office is gonna be, the Treasurer's Office is gonna be there. You can go to 513relief.org. We've had over 400,000 visits to find out where the bus is and where the bus is going." Speaking of cancer, I just want to say that too many people, including my mother, who passed away from breast cancer, too many people are getting hit with cancer, and they're not recovering. The cancer rates in Hamilton County have gone up. We've heard about the White House saying that they're going to put more money toward trying to find a cure. If we can get a vaccination for COVID and quickly, as we were able to do it, I'm convinced that we can get that done for cancer. We must unite. It's hitting everybody. It doesn't matter your color. It doesn't matter your economic status. It doesn't matter your age, your party affiliation. Cancer is coming in and wiping us out, and Hamilton County has been a target where it's going up, and we're going to too many funerals. And so, last year, I wanted to get this cancer caucus together, but this year, I've had a conversation with the CEO of UC Health and Michelle Young and her group, what they're trying to do. We must come together in Hamilton County and get the resources that we need. We've got the intelligence. We've got the hospitals and the research and the university. I believe the cure can happen right here, but we must unite. And so, I am advocating us having, just like we did with COVID, a unified front to fight cancer. Public safety is critical to the future of our, to the future of our county. I am pleased to announce that our board has fully funded in this budget the request of our sheriff, Sheriff McGuffey. Some of those budget items includes $22.3 million in our budget for safety capital improvements of the Justice Center, for cell door locks replacement, window security barriers, low-voltage cell barriers, lock replacements, and more. I don't know all the technical terms. All I know is we putting $22 million to make sure Sheriff McGuffey has what she needs to keep us safe. And this board stepped forward and did that. And the board needs to get a round of applause for that. And the board needs to get a round of applause for that. In addition, Damar Hamling that happened here and we were able to, through UC Health, able to save his life. We found that we didn't have the AEDs. And I'm here to tell you that through a partnership with the sheriff and the Rotary Club, we have put up, our board, $125,000. And now we have AEDs in our sheriff cruisers. And thanks to the state of Ohio, we now have capital investments of $200,000 for Care Pods inside of our Justice Center. Thank you, state. Emergency management and 911 operations are critical, especially what's happening now around the country. It's very important that we have the best facilities, the best technologies, so when you call 911, we're ready to go. If there is a disaster, we are ready to go with emergency management. I'm pleased to announce that our county has invested $24 million for the construction of a consolidated new EMA and 911 facility located in Springdale, Ohio. And we will begin in 2024. One Hamilton County. We're getting it done. Now, last year at the State of the County, you know how I was so passionate and all of us are passionate? And we talked about the effects of the gun range has had, it's located in Evendale, but it has the effects on children in Lincoln Heights and Woodline for 70 years. Over that time, there were many that came before us who tried to put it together, but we couldn't get the financing. We couldn't find the location. Last State of the County, I said, this is environmental injustice. As President of the Commission, on behalf of our board, I want to tell you that we put up $20 million to fill the gap for the $36 million new regional safety complex that will house a new Cincinnati Police Range along with our Sheriff Department. I know I said, I said, mayor, I see all the mayors looking over there. See what I said, mayor, mayor of Cincinnati AVTAP, I said, we got to get this done. And let me say, we're getting it done. I want to acknowledge my colleagues again because this was bold leadership. We had to make bold decisions to go forward and tell our administrator, we're gonna put up the $20 million. I want to acknowledge again Vice President Dre House and Commissioner Dumas and myself. But we couldn't do it alone. I want to acknowledge Senator Sherrod Brown that brought federal money and Joyce Paudro, who's here tonight. I want to acknowledge our state delegation that brought some state money down. Give them a big round of applause. I want to acknowledge, I already acknowledged Mayor Pureball, but I want to acknowledge Vice Mayor Jan Michelle Lemon Kearney that's been at the table at the meetings. I want to acknowledge Sheriff McGuffey and Police Chief Teresa Thigie, two women coming together saying, let's get it done. I want to acknowledge Lincoln Heights former mayor Ruby Mumphrey and interim mayor Linda Charles Jeter. I want to acknowledge Councilman Dorance Daniels and his Heights Movement that got involved and all of the Lincoln Heights council members. I want to acknowledge Corane Township. We could have done it with Corane Township trustees. Thank you. Evendale Mayor Dick Finan, we want to acknowledge him and thank you. And then County Administrator, Jeff Aluta, and City Manager Cheryl Long. Working together. Now, if I missed your name, don't get mad. We gonna have a groundbreaking this year. You'll be able to get your name mentioned in there. There'll be more opportunities. But this is an all hands on deck project. I want to say this to you. When we talk about one Hamilton County, it's, oh man, can people work together? Let me show you something. This project, we have the county, we have the state, we have the federal government, we've got the city of Cincinnati, we got the village of Lincoln Heights and Woodline, we got the township, Corane. All hands on deck. We're committed to working together. It's one Hamilton County, and that's how you get it done. Now, I have to say this. Now, the money's there. Everybody's on the table. Now Jeff and Cheryl, let's get this MOU done. Joyce Paudro, let's get the EPA assessment moving. We got so many people who are ready for shovels and hard hats. We're so excited. We got to get this done. This is historic, and we thank all of you. Now, we have an affordable housing crisis. It's a state of emergency. Not just in Hamilton County, but throughout the state of Ohio and throughout the country. It's a growing trend that's going in the wrong direction.
Say it.
Our board took a bold step. Out of the arper money, we could have put it anywhere. We decided to put our largest investment ever toward affordable housing by putting $40 million to deal with affordable housing. I'm gonna say that again, not $40, not $4,000, not $4 million, $40 million. We gave $33 million of it to put in a fund with Cincinnati Development Fund to be able to leverage more funds and partner with others who have put money in that fund to fill the gap on affordable housing projects. The first thing we said is, we got to get something now. And so we were able to put $15 million toward 18 different projects that would have never happened for affordable housing, and we were able to get moving now. We also said that we want to put a portion of those dollars to develop some other new housing targeting housing for senior citizens. Housing for reentry. Housing for people with disabilities. Housing for those who are veterans. And I'm most proud to announce that there will be an upcoming partnership that you'll hear about with our friends at LAD that deals with housing for disability. What they have is unique, never been done before, and people with disabilities is the number one minority group in America. And what we're getting ready to do in partnership with LAD and the Cincinnati Development Fund and our board and the money that we put up is gonna be something that the world would be coming and looking to replicate throughout this country. LAD is here. Please put your hand up and let's give them a round of applause. Now, I'm here to say, we got it done, but we not gonna announce it to a couple weeks, okay? So look forward to this big announcement that we have coming forward. Affordable housing is very important to build new affordable housing. But one of the things I've been very concerned about under the title affordable housing is that we must make it affordable for the people to keep the house they already have. We can't price them out of Hamilton County, out of Ohio. It's critical to the future of our county and of our state. And so we put $5 million that we put out of this to help people with their property taxes and their mortgages. I'm here to tell you that $4 million that already went out helping folks. We've got another close to a million dollars. And tomorrow, we'll be out at Corinthian Baptist Church with Jobs and Family Services, and you could come and see if you can get some help for the money we have left, and we're looking for more money that we can put in that pot. Now, I'm here to tell you that the County Commission, we do not control your property taxes. The reassess, I gotta say that one more time. Write it down, put it, I need y'all hashtagging it, put it on TikTok. Gotta get it out. Because the lies will be running. Get it out. Whether it's a Twitter, X, one of those. And we want it on the old Twitter and the new X. Get it out. County Commissioners, we don't control your reassessments. Okay, I want to tell you that right now. I was at the State House trying to fight it and I was outnumbered. But let me say this. I am calling on, as the President of County Commission and our board, I'm calling on the governor to intervene.
Yeah.
We're in a state of emergency. Contact your tax commissioner that you appointed. To put some type of payment extension until the legislature in Columbus can get this straightened out. See, we need them to straighten out, but you got your bill due. You know, two bills. Their bill takes a long time. Your bill, you got to do right now. So we need the governor to intervene because this is not just Hamilton County, but this is the entire state. And we must be having people stay in the state of Ohio. We are a border county. People can go to Kentucky. We don't get no money off Kentucky. People can go to Indiana. We don't get no money off Indiana. We want people to stay on this side of the river in Ohio and Hamilton County. So I'm asking the governor to get involved because this is a state of emergency. People, 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 many people, our seniors here today, all they have is their house. They did their time, they worked, they retired, they did it right. We cannot have them taxed out. But we, as a county, must also be all hands on deck. We must find every way we can, every nickel and dime and dollar that we can find that's under our preview to help the citizens. That's why I will continue to call for the full 30% property tax rollback that was promised to homeowners when they voted for the two stadiums. Now, I was able to get it, our colleagues, I want to thank them, when I first got here, we were able to get it. It was only one of three times we've ever gotten. But if there was not a time such as this that we would need it, now is the time. And if we can keep our promise for the stadiums, we must keep our promise to the citizens. So I will continue to push for that. And then lastly, on affordable housing, we must try to be creative. The old way of tax abatements, it's not working. Where you come in with a new house and they get abated. But you holding on to your house. You go up and you don't get no abating. So I'm calling for all elected officials that all through the municipalities to see if we could try to work together. I don't have the answer, but see if we could work together and find a way to do an abatement sharing program where the new house gets abated, but a percentage, you get a little, you know, you get a little money too for hanging in there. And so I'm looking forward and offering myself up to work with any municipality would like to look toward that because we have to get creative. We must promote affordability. We must promote affordability, whether you want to own a home or whether you want to rent a home, you should be able to afford to live in Hamilton County. Now, there are many senior citizens who are in the house tonight. And we wanted to make sure you were not left behind. But I want to report that our board has made a bold step to continue this year to put in the budget once again, $1 million in the budget to help with your home repairs for senior citizens through the council on aging. Now, we helped a lot of you before, and we're ready to help you again. So give it up to our board, standing up for the seniors. Now, youth violence is up. But also promoting those who are doing it wrong while not providing adequate resources for youth that are doing it right is also wrong. And that's why our board stepped up and said, we are going to invest in our youth so no matter your income, you have the opportunities. I'm here to report, last year I said, we were putting together and opening a new office of youth so we could make sure that we're tracking what we're doing and getting the services out to the youth in a variety of ways. As the President of the Hamilton County Board of Commission, I'm proud to announce that we have helped 27,000 youth in Hamilton County with employment, with entrepreneurship training, with certificate training, summer camps, grants, and more. And we're gonna continue to do more because our youth is our future. And our future is today. Last year, I talked about Hamilton County. I wanted us to be number one. Our goal is to be the number one county for small businesses. Small business is the future. Entrepreneurs, technology, home-based businesses, storefront businesses, restaurants, it's the future. I'm proud to report that we have hosted, not only did we open the Office of Small Business, but we hosted Hamilton County's first ever Small Business Day where over 1,000 small businesses field the Sharonville Convention Center. And our board also approved $17 million in small business grants today, helping over 2,000 small businesses. And we're still helping more. Let's take a look at our small business partnership with Alloa.
We are thrilled to announce, we are thrilled to announce the Hamilton County Office of Small Business.
That moves the needle for small businesses to start their business in Hamilton County. Our goal is to be the number one county for small businesses.
There is nothing small about small businesses.
Whether you're a one person, a five person, or a 40-person business, we are here to help.
I want to thank Greg Forte and his team, who is our Director of our Office of Small Businesses. This year, we'll be having another Small Business Day. We're hoping to do it in May, so stay tuned. But they'll be out there tomorrow at the 513 Relief Bus. But they'll be out there tomorrow at the 513 Relief Bus. Now, many, you may have heard recently some things about Hamilton County and our veterans. There are over 42,000 veterans and families that live here in Hamilton County. My late grandfather was a proud Navy man. In the audience today, we have many who have served in our armed forces. Please raise your hand, and let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you for your service. Now, while the county commission does not have direct oversight of the Veteran Services Commission, we do have two new appointed members, and we're excited about what they will bring to the table. But the message is very clear. We want to do everything we can do to help our veterans. I am pleased to announce that in this year's budget, we fully funded what was asked for. But in addition to that, we've put $200,000 in the budget to host Hamilton County's first ever countywide Veteran Services Appreciation Day, to connect veterans to assistance here in Hamilton County, and we're hoping to have it on the Ohio Riverbank. We thank our veterans for their service, but we must go further, not just thanking them for their service. It's time for us to provide services to our veterans and their families. And we're looking forward to hosting that major event, we think, which is a step in the right direction. Addiction is real. It's real. Families that go through it, it's real.
Say it.
Hearing the stories of families who've lost their loved ones, people with great jobs and just losing it all, addiction is real. Hamilton County has one of the top addiction response teams and programs in the country. As part of the lawsuit settlement, our county formed One Ohio to support prevention and treatment programs. Vice President Denise Dreehouse is our representative on the State Board for One Ohio. Our local board consists of all three commissioners, representatives from the sheriff, our Drug and Recovery Court Judge Nicole Sanders, doctors, the health commissioners, faith leaders, and those with lived experiences. The Board of Commissioners approved a total of $1.6 million in appropriations in 2022 and '23 to support addiction response prevention and recovery efforts. In addition, through the work of Megan Guthrie, Lisa Webb, and our Drug and Recovery Court Judge Nicole Sanders, we have brought in a record number of grants, 2.7 million over five years. I would like to ask Judge Nicole Sanders to please stand and be recognized. I will also ask for our quick response team, if any of them are here tonight, and our partners in the fight, please stand along with our director, Trina Jackson, from our county's reentry team. Please stand. Anybody from the reentry team as well. Thank you for being on the front lines. As the former deputy director of the Ohio tourism, I know all too well the importance of tourism, that tourism plays in economic development. Hamilton County is partnering with the City of Cincinnati for renovation and expansion of the convention district. The county bought the old Millennium Hotel Headquarter, which housed 800 rooms, and it was torn down. Therefore, we must replace it with a headquarter hotel with at least 800 rooms, so we could continue to be competitive with surrounding states. Last week, we received good news that the state is putting in $40 million in tax credits that I am told will help solidify a new headquarter hotel. So please, stay tuned. Last week, we also cut the ribbon at the Sharonville Convention Center for a 40,000-square-foot ballroom expansion that our county helped fund. It was named after the late Commissioner Todd Purtoon, and it will play a critical role as the Convention Center, Duke Energy Center, will be closed down for renovations. We want to keep conventions here and events here in Hamilton County. And so Sharonville has picked up many events, like the NAACP banquet, the Urban League banquet, and so many others. Now, last year, I talked about youth sports tourism and the fact that we are on a mission to get a piece of the $91 billion youth sports tourism industry. We have seen, we have some of the top amateur sports athletes right here in Hamilton County that's gone on to win state championships, and we want to see more of them going to college. We want more exposure. Every week, a mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, and yes, even people like me, aunties, are running around to dance and cheer and basketball, volleyball, baseball, swim, and all kind of tournaments and competitions, and we're spending a lot of money. I want to make sure that that money stays right here in Hamilton County. So I'm proud to announce that we now have a sports consulting firm, Victus Advisors, who has been looking into this and researching, and will have a report to us in the coming weeks. We also have had interest from many, after putting this out there, that are very interested in supporting and also having a youth sports complex. Even a private sports group has come to us who would like to see and are working on having a youth sports complex like this in the suburbs of Hamilton County. Now, we'll tell you that Warren County's trying to get them. I want it in Hamilton County. And I believe he's with us today, Mr. Benny Goodyear. If you're here, please stand. There he is. Mr. Goodyear hosts over 3,000 tournaments a year, has been looking to have a place to have the tournament, has had to go out to Claremont County and other counties to host it. He is a resident and taxpayer at Hamilton County. He said he wants to have it here in Hamilton County, but Warren County's trying to get them, but we want them here in Hamilton County, so we can have part of the $91 billion tourism that's going to other areas. So this idea is real, and we hope and pray that you have it here in Hamilton County. Jeff, get to work, y'all got to meet them in the hallway. As the visionary founder on the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, I am pleased to announce. Thank you. I am pleased to announce that since our last time talking, we have had a grand opening. We have hosted diverse people of all ages. We've had tourists come from all over the world, and we've had over 22,000 who have come to see our Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, which is free and open to the public. I am proud that we were able to take a half an acre, just a half an acre, out of 198 acres, just a half an acre, on the Ohio River, where it sits between our Major League Baseball Stadium, home to the Reds, and our NFL Stadium, Paycor Stadium, home to the NFL Cincinnati Bengals. It's next to the Andrew Brady Music Center, and this half an acre out of 198 acres. Okay? At a time when we had no black businesses on the banks, at a time where African-Americans lived there, and it was called Bucktown, but you don't see nothing saying anything that we existed on Bucktown. Thought I'd bring that out for Black History Month. So this half acre out of 198 acres, out of 200 years, we took the rocks, and I want to thank Otis Williams, because of the, Otis Williams of the Charms, King Records, he was the one that brought it and said, pointed to the rocks and said, why can we not be included? And he's in his 80s. And that's what really made me move so quickly, because I wanted him to be alive, to see. So we took the rocks and turned it into a one-of-a-kind, interactive technology park. There's no technology park doing this in the country. There's some Walk of Fame, some concrete, I'm talking about an interactive technology park, that tells the story of black musical artists that have come from southwest Ohio. And when I was in tourism, I promoted the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. And I always said, man, that's good, we in Cleveland, but we got so much down south, in Cincinnati, in Hamilton County, in southwest Ohio, and Dayton. We need something down here. So we got the Rock Hall up there, and we've got the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame down here. And it's free. You could go, it doesn't cost you. A lot of times, we build things, and you still got to buy a ticket, right? You know, we build the stadiums, but you got to buy a ticket if you want to go inside. You don't have to buy a ticket to go inside. This is free and open to everyone. Every day from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., we have a special light show at night, so when y'all leave here, y'all could drive by there, light show at night, every night at 9:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. This is a public-private partnership. And I really want to thank Procter &amp; Gamble, who stepped up to sponsor the stars and the installation of the stars and the marketing, because you don't have a Walk of Fame without any stars. So I'm super excited. Why don't you guys take a look at the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame?
Cincinnati, Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame.
Oh, is this for real?
Yeah.
Seeing your name just gives me chills.
I wanted to be here for the first pour on the top layer. They said we gonna start at 4 o'clock, and I was down here around 4 o'clock to see it happen.
Welcome to the home of the funk. Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. Everybody on the dance floor cutting the lane, two-stepping on the runway. It goes, one, two, three, exit the room. The jet on the run, coming straight up. Party on 25 Grace Street.
Over the weekend, I went to the place they call Queen City, Cincinnati. So y'all, my trip started off with the tour of the brand-new Black Music Walk of Fame, given by the Hamilton County Commissioner, Alicia Reese. Now, it's the music greats like the Isley Brothers, who came on my show, Bootsy Collins and the late James Brown, they each have a star.
Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. You can learn your story too.
When Ms. Reese, you know, started talking about this and not actually just talking, and it started happening, it's like, oh, okay, well, this is, you know, this is something I definitely want to dedicate my time to, because, you know, it's bigger than all of us. You know, it's bigger than all of us. And for somebody to put some time into it like that, you know, you got to be real. And, you know, it was right on time, right on time.
Hey, guys, this is Aretha Chavitt. I am coming to you from the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. When I tell you this is remarkable, I am so impressed and just, my heart is so full. Being a singer musician myself, this just does it for me. I'm so proud to have such an amazing landmark in the Cincinnati area. Alicia Reese, Hamilton County, you guys have done a phenomenal job.
There's nothing like this in any of those big cities. So we got a gym right here, sitting on the riverfront here in Cincinnati, Ohio. Get down here and check it out. This place is awesome. We love you, guys. Hoot Day.
I want to thank my colleagues for their support of the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And when you go down there, one of the things I wanted to have unique, each of us have a quote down there on the wall, and it's in stone, and you get to see and hear from each commissioner of what black music and what the Walk of Fame means to them. So go down there, you'll get to see it, as well as each of us are on video welcoming people to come, and it's just been a phenomenal response. We have had 25 million unique visitors and streams, that's, we couldn't pay for that, all this free publicity. We've been on national, we've been at the, on national, we've been on BET, Gospel Superfest, I think Dr. Bobby Cartwright is here. Wave your hand if you're in the house, I think you're trying to join us. There he is, Bobby Cartwright. This man puts on a nationally syndicated celebration, and it goes over to 200 markets, is on BET nationally, and thank you for featuring the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. Anastasia Mylan is here, who helps us get the media out. I don't know if you're here, Anastasia, put your hand up, you somewhere out here, I know you said you were coming. Give her a round of applause. Sherri Shepherd, thank you nationally, Sherri Shepherd, and John Murray, thank you for getting us there. And thank you Bootsy Collins for donating Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, Cincinnati Black Music Hall of Fame. And he said, I want to do something, no charge to us, and he brought together a lot of people. Zap is on there, Reggie Callaway, DJ on the One, Penny Ford, all the way from Germany, T-Nava, I mean, so many people donated their time, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Now, this year, we'll be celebrating one year, so our one-year anniversary, our one-year birthday party, so save the date on Saturday, July 27th, I believe. It is during the Cincinnati Music Festival Weekend. Now, the Music Festival Weekend brings in $107 million in economic impact every single year to Hamilton County, and is one of the largest hotel tax generators for Hamilton County annually. So that deserves a round of applause. As you can see, Hamilton County is on the move. We are investing in people, making smart investments in affordable housing, taking our services mobile, and investing in the future. Now, that doesn't mean we have unlimited money. We are not the bank, I got to put that out there, with unlimited money. And we're not, we don't have unlimited money for every big project that comes along. We've got to stretch our dollar and leverage every dollar on behalf of the taxpayers. And we must fight for the best deal for the shareholders, which are you, the taxpayers. Currently, we have a lump-sided Bengals lease agreement that was negotiated over 20 years before any of us were elected, and has taxpayers paying and assuming 96% of the risk and the cost. We look forward to negotiating as that lease is coming to be renegotiated. And we look forward to negotiating in good faith for a new deal that is both a win for the taxpayers and a win for the Bengals. One where we diversify the funding model, where the NFL, the state of Ohio, private investment, the team, all share in the financial risk and the financial responsibility. Now, to show our good faith, we are currently making $39 million in capital improvements to Paycor Stadium to be ready ahead of the season as part of the current old lease agreement. I am optimistic that we could come to the table to get what I learned when I was an intern at Procter &amp; Gamble. The first thing they taught me was how to get a win-win, and we're looking for a win-win here in Hamilton County. And we're looking for a win-win here in Hamilton County. Last year, I gave the President's Award to UC Health for all that they did to keep Damar Hamlin alive. This year, I would like to present the President Award to the following individuals, who help bring ideas and help us move ideas. Because we're One Hamilton County, and just, you know, you have an idea, bring it to me. If it makes sense, we gonna try to put it forward, because that's what we're all about. The 513 Relief Bus was a concept when COVID and we couldn't get vaccinations in the black community, and we didn't have anything. And Joe Mallory and Brian Walker stood with me at a press conference and said, "We need a bus. We need a bus to go around to bring the resources to the people instead of the people trying to find the resources." I'd like to bring up Joe Mallory, President of the Cincinnati NAACP. Dr. Brian Walker of Walker Funeral Homes. Renee Mahavee Harris, President and CEO of Closing the Health Gap. She was on the original call when we called for a 513 Relief Bus. And then Josh Arnold, President and CEO of the Talbot House, who has gone beyond the call of duty to help us save lives on the bus. Will they come forward? Okay, we gonna keep going. People who's supposed to come up here, come on up. Next, we have, we got to keep going. I'm getting hungry. They're coming on up. Come on down, come on down. Oh, no, you don't come down yet. Now you will come down. Ladies and gentlemen, the Black Music Walk of Fame, we couldn't have done it, because we had all these things we had to do. And all of those contracts that Jeff did with the, through Phil Beck, who, I hope Phil Beck is here. I want to give him a big round of applause, the project manager, Phil Beck. Stand up. All that came through the county. But Jeff said, "We need these stars to be privately funded." And I'm telling you, these stars are not cheap. Y'all know how Hollywood is charging for these stars. These stars are not cheap, and we don't have to charge people for the stars. Damon Jones, who came and I said, "Look at these rocks." He's from Procter &amp; Gamble. I said, "Damon, don't you see it?" He was like, "What?" Black Music Walk of Fame, thank you, Damon, for not saying you're crazy. Well, Damon stepped forward and has funded our stars and has put forward over $350,000, plus a lot of in-kind. Procter &amp; Gamble is number one in marketing, so if you want to market something, you want Procter &amp; Gamble. Thank you, Damon. And last but not least, so many people are out here helping our youth. Lots of them. They don't get the recognition, they put up their own money, they put their own gas, they break up the kids. They sometimes got to be the mama and the daddy for the kids sometimes. They put self-esteem in them. And many of them stay in the community. And there was a shooting in the West End, and right behind this studio, she stayed, she kept with our kids. And for 40 years, she put together a world-class program that takes our kids out of the West End, out of Hamilton County, and takes them all over the world, exposes them, and gets some scholarships. One of the top dance programs in the country, The Q Kids. Marcia Jones Woods, founder and director of The Q Kids. I think she's making her way up. So these are our Presidential Awardees. I want to thank them for helping Hamilton County move forward, volunteering their time and putting up, in some cases, their money. Arkea even told me that sometimes, you know, she has to, they have to make their own, they have to sew the clothes, they got to teach the kids, they don't have transportation. She's got to figure all of that out. We got to put our arms around the people that are doing these positive things in our neighborhood. So please give a round of applause to all our Presidential Awardees. Hamilton County, we are strong, we are resilient, we are One Hamilton County, and we are on the move getting the job done. Thank you all for coming out. Make sure you get the Hamilton County Prescription Discount Card before you leave, and we'll see you tomorrow at Corinthian Baptist Church. God bless you all.